Meeting agenda regularly scheduled, public meeting, Glen County Islands Planning Commission, May 17th, 2016, 6:00 PM. Please turn off all cell phones and pagers at this time. We will have an invocation by Colonel Lawrence, after which we will have the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States. Those who wish to participate may, please stand.
Most gracious and merciful Father, once again we come before you. We come here that giving you thanks. We thank you for health and strength. We thank you for just giving us an opportunity to be here today. Father, as we continue moving forward on this island called St. Simons, where there are wrongs, give us the wisdom to make the corrections. We ask also, dear God, that you give us the ability to continue to respect each individual, regardless of the side that they may be on. We are such a leaders and guide us in all that we do. These blessings we rise to thy precious name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Planning Commission hears requests for preliminary subdivision plaques and site plans. The Planning Commission conducts public hearings on rezonings, certain planning documents, and ordinance amendments. The Planning Commission makes final decisions on preliminary plaques and site plans, and makes recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on all other items. The planning staff presents the case to the Planning Commission during the staff report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County Comprehensive Plan, zoning, ordinance, and other applicable regulations. The applicant shall have the opportunity to present their request to the Planning Commission. It is the responsibility of the applicant to make a presentation on the request, and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Citizens desiring to speak in favor or in opposition to the request may then address the Planning Commission. Group should select a spokesperson who may ask the group to stand to be recognized. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chair will ensure that each side has approximately equal time. And I just want to make clear that that last piece about the public speaking is to be zoning, not site plan approvals. Approval minutes for April 19th, 2016? Any changes?
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's been approved. Minutes for April 16th have been, 19th have been approved. Any requests for applicant's actions, emergency additions, or changes in order of presentation?
Yes, ma'am. That has received a written request to defer SP 3176 to the former hotel. He came in late, he did not have the time for staff review, and so the applicant was requesting that. I'm told by staff member tonight that the site plan for Marshall Building Phase Two, in its conjunction with VP for Marshall Building Phase Two, should also be requested deferred because we have a new supplemental of a site plan that has not been reviewed for orders.
So which ones, excuse me, which ones are there?
3176, the site plan for Polar, which was before you last month. We did not get a recent middle appointment to have a review on that project, so that was being requested by the applicant. Been advised by staff tonight that we received a supplemental on the site plan for Marshall Building Phase Two, which would be also in conjunction with the Village Preservation One, Marshall Building Phase Two, four days ago, and consequently has not been through a review cycle. And so therefore, staff will be requesting those to be deferred.
Is that three items?
There's three items.
But the zoning is still on?
The zoning is still on?
Yes, on this.
I make the motion to defer SP 3176 as requested by the applicant, and to defer SP 3249 at the request of staff.
And VP.
Oh, and VP two?
Yes, sir.
And VP 3269, both at the request of staff.
I'll second.
Until next month, until our next meeting.
June 21st.
June 21st.
Any discussion on that? Any discussion on that?
I have to share a little understanding of what Mr. Kirkendall said. I'm worried.
Can you please?
I make the motions to defer SP 3176 at the request of the applicant, and to defer SP 3249 and VP 3269, both concerning the Marshall Building, at the request of staff, until our next meeting on June 21st. And we have a second on that motion.
Is there any reason why you're requesting that? I've informed that we had a supplemental for our site plan four days ago, and staff has not had a chance to review it.
Why?
Because our reports are due after the condition more than four days ago.
Would you say that again?
He asked why we had not had a chance to review it in four days? Because our staff reports are due after this board more than four days before the meeting. So we have not had a chance to prepare the report.
That's been proper notice to the public and everybody.
But there are reports from the package.
Yes, sir. And it'd be the old site plan.
The new site plan was submitted after those reports were written.
Go ahead.
Should those motions please handle several lines of motion arguments?
No, there's no reason for us to do that. And I assume that most of you guys are here for the rezoning. And the rezoning has not been deferred. So we will discuss that tonight. So in favor?
Call the question. All in favor? Aye.
Unanimous vote for deferment to next commission meeting.
Okay, so that leaves the zoning for the Marshall Building.
Right. ZM 3220, Marshall Building, consider a request to rezone 350 Ocean Boulevard from VR Village Residential to VMU Village Mixed Use. The purpose of the request is to make the .5 acre currently vacant, property the same as adjacent parcels, and ultimately combine it with the Marshall Building site. Parcel ID 04-04901, Dr. Kate, agent for Haven Paxton, applicant and owner. Staff?
Thank you very much. I will be presenting this case for you all tonight, case of David Hart, County of Glen County. As you can see up on the screen, the red highlighted area is the parcel to which we are referring tonight. It's subject to rezoning from VR to VMU. Here is the property in question. This is from Ocean Drive, looking into the gates that are on Ocean Drive. Or Ocean Boulevard, excuse me, I'm sorry. Here is the... I'm sorry, I'm a little... The angles throwing me off. This is from 350 Ocean Boulevard to across the street, across Ocean Boulevard. This is looking at the property from Lord Avenue. This is where another gate is. And this is from that same location, looking across Lord Avenue to the adjacent properties. Here is the proposed use of this property, if it is successfully rezoned. The applicant would join it with the rest of the Marshall site, and it would be used to develop a parking lot, and a portion of it would be used for the condo, proposed The applicant would like you to consider a request to rezone 350 Ocean Boulevard from VR Village Residential to VMU Village Mixed Use, for the purpose of combining it with the adjacent parcels, and developing it as a parking lot and a portion of the condo hotel. There was a previous application that came before you in October of 2014, that was ultimately denied by the Board of Commissioners in November of 2014. The Village Residential zoning designation is in place to encourage the healthy formation and continuance of a stable, healthy environment, while prohibiting unwarranted encroachment of high-density residential, commercial, industrial, or other uses which would detract from the less intensive residential nature, residential character of this area. The VMU is a commercial, is commercial in nature. Its purpose is to encourage the healthy formation and continuation of a compatible economically healthy environment for professional, business, and residential uses which would benefit from being in close proximity to each other. In the VMU district, this property would have enough square footage to have 17 sleeping rooms. Density in the VMU is measured by sleeping rooms per acre, and that is how it is, that's how that's calculated. The proposed condo hotel would bring in additional 436 average trips per day to this area, and this does not include the trips generated by the proposed parking on Lord Avenue and Ocean Boulevard. The intensity of the proposed use would increase noise levels in this predominantly residential area. The applicant, although, is willing to install sidewalks and build 52 new parking spaces along Lord Avenue, adding much-needed parking to the village. The applicant is also willing to provide a connection between Ocean Boulevard and Lord Avenue to promote traffic circulation to the area. This may ease some of the traffic congestion at the intersection of Kingsway and Mallory Street, for traffic headed into and out of the village. The future land use map shows this area as Village Center. The guidelines for development in the Village Center suggest low-to-medium intensity office, retail, and commercial services. Having a 42-unit condo hotel and new parking and a new connection between Lord and Ocean could negatively impact the surrounding neighborhoods. The possible actions that are for the Island Planning Commission today are move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of rezoning application ZM 3220 as submitted, move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the application with conditions, move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners denial of the rezoning application, or move to defer the application to a date circuit. And we have your possible motions up on the screen, and I'd like to answer any questions you all may have at this time.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
How many residential homes are next to the area?
I can't say that I calculated that exactly. There are at least three subdivisions that are directly adjacent to the property, or across the street from the property. There is a high-density residential development right next to it, but there are two subway, subdivision entrances off of Ocean Boulevard. There is a subdivision that abuts the property called The Grove. I believe it's not accessed through Lord or Ocean, and there, I'm going to say there is another, there is another subdivision, again, not accessed through Lord, that's on the opposite side, and I don't... What's it called? Neptune? Okay, Neptune subdivision, that's right across the street, right across Lord Avenue from the property.
Village News.
The Village's News?
News, W E S, that's more.
Okay. The Village News?
Muse.
Muse, okay, I'm sorry. The Village News.
Road subdivision, Village Oaks.
And the...
That's on the right side that has access.
Okay, off of Ocean?
Yes.
Okay. Village Oaks, you said?
Village Oaks.
Thank you.
I have a question, a couple of questions. One, on the legend you give us here, one of these maps, it shows Georgia Street, but I couldn't find Georgia Street. Is that an unopened street? Because I went down that street, I couldn't find it. I drove all around, could not find Georgia Street.
Can't hear you.
Oh, you can't? I could not locate Georgia Street that you've got identified on your map here? Is that an unopened street? Because it goes like directly to this piece of property.
I believe Georgia Street is the...
There's fairway?
Is the alley that has been abandoned. If it goes across this property, it's the one I'm thinking of, it has been officially abandoned by the county.
Oh, so you should take it off of your map when you give it, because I looked everywhere for it, couldn't find it. So it was an alley that got abandoned, it's called Georgia Street?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, well, that clears that up. The other one, question I had, as you mentioned, the number of sleeping rooms per acre, is that per net acre or per acre?
It is per developable acre.
That means net acre. If it's per developable area, then it's per net acre, and yours presentation said per acre, it's a big difference. Okay, clear that up. Thank you.
Any more questions of staff? It's applicant?
Where is that?
It's applicant here?
I'm Dr. Roberts, Robert's Civil Engineering, representing the applicant here tonight.
And as you have heard, this is a request to rezone the property in question from VR to VMU. As I understand it today, four residential homes that could be built on that property with no zoning action, have just been required of a building permit, most to move forward. The owner is prepared to expand the village parking to serve his project, no doubt, but also to serve the public in this case. You see on the, on the screen, there was 52 additional parking spots on Lord Avenue. That actually is just on Lord Avenue, there's actually over 100 parking spaces that will be available for public use as a result of this development. Certainly, the village is in need of, in desperate need of parking, and those spaces, over 100 spaces would be available to the public. A portion of those spaces would also be for use of this development, but nonetheless, they would be available to the public. Also, the Lord Avenue dumpsters, you guys have been behind Mellow Mushroom, it's very unsightly with the dumpsters. This proposes to clean up all that. It'd be a common area for a single compactor, and a lot of those unsightly dumpsters would be replaced. Sidewalk connectivity, it'd be a nice new sidewalk, it would be connected from the village to the end of Lord Avenue, and through this development, so the enhanced pedestrian experience as a result of this. Lastly, the lot, right now, as I said, would have four residential units. They would be very dense, they would take up a lot of space beside the neighbors. As this plan shows, only 94%, of the lot would wind up being a parking lot. 6% would be used for the condo hotel, which really condos, VMU requirements, we call it condo hotel, but basically it's condos. But that would encroach into the lot, only 6% of the area would actually be buildings. So you can, it's a very stark contrast of four dense homes encroaching all of the lot, or 6% of the lot being a portion of this condominium complex. So we request that you give consideration for approval of this, and we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions of applicant?
Mr. Roberts, how do you plan to control the parking? And how much of the parking of the 100 spaces or so are necessary for the proposed development?
So for proposed development, the required number of spaces is 103. And as far as the, the control, you know, that, that would be by O D where, they're going to know that they're going to be moving into a potentially dense area, but the developer wants these to be available to the public, he doesn't want to gate this off and make it inaccessible to the public. The, one of the biggest reasons for this plan would be to connect Lord Avenue and Ocean, which are two bedded streets now. If we block off that parking so that it's controlled, and only the residents get to use it, we kill the whole point of connecting Lord Avenue and Ocean, which we think is a big benefit for the block.
So what happens if the parking is filled up with people going to the village when the residents want to use it?
The residents may have a long walk, and that's certainly something that the residents would have to, have to weigh when they're looking at it. But the bottom line is there are more parking spaces that are being created that are required for this use, so it's fair to say that there's going to be a surplus of parking because of this development.
So you're using public right-of-way to be part of the requirements for your parking spaces?
That's the trade-off, so that, that's the trade-off. We need 100, we need 89 spaces, I'm sorry, we need 103 spaces, there are 89 spaces that are in the private property.
Okay, so to satisfy your needs for the parking, you're going to do the public parking?
Exactly.
And part of that will be set, okay, I got it. All right, thank you.
Right, exactly right.
Any more questions of applicant? Thank you. Anyone like to speak in favor of the Marshall Building? Would anyone like to speak in favor of the Marshall Building plan?
Of the rezoning.
And the rezoning?
I'd like to. My name is John Dowd of St. Simons, and I have a peculiar history with this project. Long before the Marshall Building was proposed to be demolished and reconstructed, when I was on the body that you sit on, and I have an office in the village, and we have a drainage problem and a parking problem. One day, for whatever reason, I went down to Lord Avenue, and I encourage all of you to go down to Lord Avenue today. It's a dumpster alley. And it's a public road. There's a condominium project that has a fence and landscaping on the right side that includes total parking on the right, dumpsters on the left side. I approached, on my own, long before this developer got involved, all the restaurants that had those dumpsters, and I put them together, and Mr. Roberts, Mr. Hanley, Mr. Progins, I don't know, I don't, all the names come to mind, but we had about 15 people in the room. And we were told that the county tried this before, consolidating waste into one area, but the problem was, the county maintained the ownership of the dumpsters, and the county got stuck because the people that were using it ultimately didn't pay. So these private business people have agreed to create an L C, whose sole purpose is to install a compactor, not a dumpster, a compactor. And we're talking, and it's been a while since I've been involved, but Mellow Mushroom has a dumpster, and agreed that they would provide access in all the merchants who are going to participate. And if the dumpster overflowed, they'd have more frequent or a bigger one. I will tell you, one of the things that just frustrates me is that that project, long before this development project, was on the table, and it had nothing to do with density, it had nothing to do with anything but creating additional parking, cleaning up the right-of-way, and I think Mr. Roberts mentioned it, tying that road into the property on Ocean Boulevard. And I submit to you, that is an accident waiting to happen. And do the paving, do the marking, and I think at one time that Mr. Hanley can help me, but I think we created or improved 100 and something parking spots. When I was on the board, I think the man's name is Mr. Paxton, he came in to try to do something, and I don't know, because I didn't say, and I apologize for being late, but that property that now is going to be part of this property, which is going to be part of the solution to the parking problem, and creating a circular, and it's going to be one-way, and it'll be organized traffic flow and parking. He could build four homes, and I guess 35 feet high. Now, my understanding, only a portion of what he could build, four homes on 35 feet high, is going to be used for development. The rest of it is going to be provided as public parking, we heard. This, the only thing that stood in the way was someone from the county asking the engineering department to go out there and do a survey of Lord Avenue, identify property lines, right-of-ways, and obstructions, and tie it all around. And we're here tonight, and I'm frustrated by it, because this is the kind of thing that should be done to improve and enhance our island. But we're focused on the density, and I understand it. This is, in my humble opinion, a no-brainer, giving up four homes in favor of tying in and looping a parking and a circular drive system in return for 12 bedrooms. And the thing, and I think, and I'm, one of my dear friends is sitting behind me, and I hope he's not armed, but this is not the typical development issue that we're talking about. We've got to step back. This is a public game, not a public office. And if you're down, and I want to say one other thing, and I asked David and Paul Andrews to include it, if you go to the very beginning of Lord Avenue during a heavy rain, and I'll tell you, the people in Kwanis will fire their employees if they park anywhere other than Lord Avenue. When there's a heavy rain, these poor working people park their cars there, and I'm not exaggerating, the water rises so high if enters their car. I mean, the people can least afford it. That was to be part of the solution, the drainage, the dumpsters, the parking, and the circular drive. I appeal to you, just step back and think of the net gain to the community as compared to the alternative, four 35-foot homes versus 4% encroachment on that property. I thank you.
I'm Linda Olson, and I live in the village in the village.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
I'm Linda Olson, and I live in the village in the village, and it is also considered a condo hotel. I'm in total agreement with this gentleman. I moved in in December, and was just outraged at the dumpsters on Lord Avenue. I've called the police about the litter control, the noise I'm looking every night at 3 o'clock with bottles and cans being thrown at the dumpsters. Asked if there was any noise made there that could be done, I've been told there's nothing. The only solution that I see is the one that is more before us tonight. I go up Lord Avenue to the village, every time I go to the village, I'm picking up trash, I've contacted K, Glen County Beautiful, they are just as outraged, but so far, nothing has come except that this proposal, which I think is good.
I'm O'Chamless, the owner of the building. And I just kind of wanted to second Mr. Dowd's sentiments. We've been working on a layout on how to do this with a bunch of the restaurants down in the village, and kind of came to a consensus, and I think the developer here is even kind of taking it to... of taking that decision further. We all agree that the dumpsters need to change in some form or fashion, and this does it for multiple reasons. Multiple village, villas, neighbors have complained to us, we have our own trash, and so it's not us that's moving there. And the, the site, the raccoons, the rats, and then, but the biggest thing is the added parking. You're gonna add a hundred parking spaces and make that alley look beautiful. Every person owns a, a business down in the village will tell you that we need more parking
My name's Rob Muller, I'm a resident here in St. Simons, and I have a question, I'm not for or against it, but if one of the reasons for doing this is to provide public parking, is there any guarantee or assurance that it will remain that way forever? It gets to be a problem in the future, what's the chance that it could be changed? So some sort of deep restrictions or something that's permanent, so that it remains that way? So that's one thing. And I'm just curious, kind of detailed question, the site plan, does this require replating as well? Or is this gonna continue as two separate sites, two separate lots?
I think the applicant would, if he has already not purchased the property from the owner, and they can just combine it through tax purposes, but not have to replat anything. You don't have to replat something if you're combining lots to make a lot larger.
Okay, because I was curious, the setbacks are applied to two separate lots, I don't see how you could--
Well, the setbacks are gonna be a newer zero.
Okay.
So they wouldn't necessarily have a buffer if they were, if it was rezoned, there wouldn't necessarily, there wouldn't be a buffer between those two properties. If it stays, if it stays the village residential, there is a buffer requirement. But the applicant has already proposed some buffers to try and handle the difference between that parking area and the preserved property and pond that are adjacent to the taxes cost.
Thank you.
No, I guess wait, let's see, I'll wait. Anyone else like to speak?
In favor?
In favor?
Opposed?
Anyone oppose? Anyone oppose?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm Julian Smith, I live on St. Simons. I want to begin by thanking Mr. Akenhart for a very fine staff report, a very useful staff report memo, pointing out some of the deficiencies in the application. The issue of parking is a very interesting one. The applicant wants to change the zoning of a strip of land in order to supply two things, a lot of parking spaces and connectivity between Lord Avenue and Ocean Boulevard. Now, a spokesperson for the applicant talked about how, essentially, this is the only way to do it. This is not the only way to do it. Had the applicant not already begun constructing the first phase in his project, and that building is, is going up, he would have more room to play with. And if you deny this, and the applicant loses all appeals, et cetera, then he would, he really should rethink the second phase of this hotel, so he can have connectivity immediately to the west of the building that is now going up on Ocean Boulevard. I want to ask one question. The, the staff memo refers, for this project, for this application, refers to thirty-three sleeping rooms, and forty-two sleeping rooms, et cetera. Looking at the floor plans for these sleeping rooms, essentially, what we have are small apartments. You come in, there's a bathroom to one side, there's a small bedroom, opposite, a living area with a small kitchen. If you look at the layout, it's quite possible that if these so-called condos are used as hotel rooms, they're going to be double occupancy, two couples. All the owner of the hotel has to do is supply a folded-up sofa in the living portion. So what, what is going to happen here potentially is, you're going to get a lot more bodies, and potentially a lot more cars. Now, the, the application, I'm sorry, the floor plans do not have a usable scale. I asked the applicant this morning how large each of these hotel rooms or condo units would be, and he said about twelve hundred square feet. If they're as large as six hundred square feet, I'll even doubt that. So I think before you make a, a decision to approve this, rather than defer it or deny it, that you should find out how much floor space is being proposed here. And finally, on parking, yes, applicant promises to provide a lot more parking convenience to the village, but it's going to be more convenient to the tenants, the occupants of the hotel or condos, who are gonna park their cars there when they, before they go to bed at night. Most cars are gonna be there in the morning when parking spaces are needed. So if you do approve this, there would have to be some guarantee that there is going to be legitimate parking available for members of the public, and not just for the tenants of this building. Thank you.
My name is Beth Levy, and I am a homeowner at 148 Grove Lane, and I spoke October two years ago, asked for the denial of this to the planning commission. It was approved, but then the commission denied it unanimously. This is not about dumpsters, parking, this is about residential zoning. It needs to remain as is, residential. I talked to Basset Kate not long after he was not able to get his zoning, and I let him know that our neighborhood and residents, residents, they are okay with four houses going there. They're trying to sell it to you as it's going to be more dense with four houses. I disagree. This is what it's zoned for. Four houses will be just fine. It's residential, it needs to remain residential. And I ask you to please consider our viewpoint, and please, counting all the property, understand that parking lot, I live on a pond, the same lot, half-acre lot is, and a parking lot will create, as indicated earlier, the noise pollution. That pond will exacerbate the noise, if that's the correct word, it will make it worse. And it will be a nuisance to, to not just our homes, but also the other homes that are around the lake, there are probably five or six other homes around the lake. So when I bought this property in two thousand and five, it was residential, and that was what, or this property adjacent, excuse me, was residential, and that was what I knew as a homeowner, the property was zoned, so it needs to remain zoned residential. These issues come up often, or have over the last several years, where there's a rezoning from residential to partial, and I am almost always opposed to these, and this is no exception. So I just ask that you will consider our viewpoint. I thank you for the time that you've given me and others tonight, it's been a very good experience. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eric, I live here in St. Simons. You know, we keep having this discussion here on the island about overdevelopment, and the excuse seems to always be, well, you know, if it, if it fits the criteria, if it fits the zoning, well, we don't have any choice, we've gotta just say yes. This doesn't. Obviously, this does not fit the criteria. This is changing the criteria to meet the needs of the developer, over the needs of the people who live here. I don't think it's a secret on this island that everyone on this island thinks we've had too much development. Right? I think if we pulled the room, ninety percent of the people in here said, there's been a bit too much, we've really gotta slow it down. We don't always have to bend over and say, okay, every new development. If building a fifty-foot-tall, forty-two-room hotel right in the village is the only answer to garbage pickup, I don't, I'm afraid we've lost sight of that. And while it sounds terrific that we get more parking in the village, somehow, I think the forty-two owners of these units, or the forty-two guests of these units, are not gonna be real happy when they find out they can't park where they live, or where they're staying. I just don't really see that playing out very well. I mean, sounds great in concept, but in the reality of the world, those spaces are gonna be full, and someone's gonna be upset. And my hunch is, those rules will change pretty quickly, like they often do around here. Now, I don't know, you know, a forty-two-unit, fifty-foot-tall hotel compared to four houses? I think the four houses-- Yeah. When I was growing up, I was taught that government is to serve the greater good. And we seem to have lost sight of that in this country, certainly in Washington we have. But the greater good here is not being represented by development of a forty-two-room hotel in the village that requires zoning change. That is not serving the greater good. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is David Lottman, I live on Ocean Boulevard. I'd like you to consider a couple of issues that came to mind when the previous speaker mentioned noise pollution. I eat in the village quite often, I'm in the village quite often, and I'm very aware, as probably all of you are, there are quite often tourists that come through from buses, several per day. That'd be a perfect spot for buses to park. I don't think that that's what we want happening there. And secondly, there are a lot of groups of motorcyclists, and I'm, nothing against motorcycles, but they're very, very noisy. We also have a large number of pickup trucks that are quite loud, that come through our village, and other vehicles that are quite large, that are very loud. And once this parking lot is discovered, I can assure you that who I have mentioned will find it, they will be using it, and it will create a lot of noise. Thank you.
Hi, Terry Simpson, I live at 140 Grove, oh, Terry Simpson, I live at 140 Grove Lane. I live on the other side of the Land Trust property, Beth Levy lives on that other side of it. Lord Avenue deadens into my backyard, and there is an easement there next to the sewage lift station, the water lift station. Paxton's property is at the end of my, of my house, of my yard. Right now, it's all foliage and trees and all that, but as soon as they cut everything down, all I'm gonna see is asphalt and the Marshall Building, Phase One, Phase Two. You can already see Phase One over the trees now. I can only imagine what the noise level is gonna be like at our patio, our deck, when there's cars driving up and down, as to the other gentlemen's point motorcycles and tour buses and everything else. Again, this was zoned residential, we bought the property in two thousand and thirteen, knowing it was zoned residential and that it was pretty much safe, because we have the Land Trust next door. So I just implore you to please deny this application for this.
My name is Paula Gudex, I live at three four nine Ocean Boulevard. There is no property that will be more impacted by this development than mine. I urge you to deny this. It will forever change my home, which I bought. I bought the land, built the house, thinking that this was residential. This is gonna put me in the middle of a city, essentially. Thank you.
My name is David Dale. I'm representing the Island Village Oaks Owners Association, better known to you folks as Village Oaks, which I'm a board member. I've been elected, I won the lottery to be the spokesman, I bet. Village Oaks, as you know, is a thirty-two single-family household residential neighborhood. It's located on Ocean Boulevard, directly across from the existing construction that is known as the Marshall Building right now, Phase One. Obviously, the purpose of being here is to want to be sure we officially rest your opposition and thoughts regarding this project. If you'll bear with me, I'm gonna read a couple of my Marshall, because I've got some detail in it, but I want to be sure it's not mistaken. With all due respect to any traffic studies that may have been commissioned, the big problem here is traffic, traffic, traffic. There are currently real daily congestion issues that exist now, and there are people that come off pushing the, our side of the neighborhood deal with the data. As you know, there are previously two crossover points on Ocean Boulevard on the King's Way. The crossover closest to the light of Mallory Street was permanently closed due to curbing to accommodate construction of the Mellow Mushroom parking lot. This action resulted in pedestrian traffic being routed onto the fringe of Ocean Boulevard, across the width of the Mellow Mushroom parking lot, to reach the sidewalk adjacent to Dale Sur Park. And it created an unsafe and dangerous condition for pedestrians. At least in our neighborhood, the homeowners in there bought there for a variety of reasons, it's residential, they expected to stay there. They also like to be able to walk to the village, and that definitely, I could tell you from personal experience, when you walk around that point outside the Mellow Mushroom parking lot, it is dangerous, dangerous. Secondly, in addition, traffic flowing from the public parking area and local offices and existing residences now backs up to the remaining, now backs up at the remaining crossover, and it's almost a ninety-degree angle to Ocean Boulevard. This creates another unsafe condition for cars attempting to make a left-hand turn, as drivers become dependent on traffic courtesy to ease the gap in the stack of Mallory Street light. There is also very limited visibility of oncoming northbound traffic. The fact is, when there is traffic stacked at the Mallory Street light, oncoming traffic is only visible when, to the turning vehicle, when it enters the northbound lane. Very, very dangerous. There is no control layer at all. Even if the county may improve the crossover from Ocean Boulevard to King's Way, there will still continue to be stacking on King's Way due to the close proximity of traffic light in Mallory Street. Secondly, the resurgence of the Queen's Court across the street--
Yes.
--which is a good thing, is also gonna add to traffic congestion. Condo hotels, which I believe is the proper name for you if it's not for this project, I apologize, I know it's mixed use for some office, tend to have more cars than a regular transit hotel. So I would question the amount of parking spaces that they claim they will really need as realistic as possible. People in the village, when it was a vacant lot, would use that vacant lot as a crossover on two Ocean Boulevard to get on King's Way. That is a bottleneck, it's gonna get no worse, or no better, it's gonna do nothing but get exacerbated. There's the retention pond that's been referred to by some previous-- There is the retention pond that's been referred to by some previous presenters. It's always full, and I make that remark for two reasons. One, we all know that paving increases runoff. I'm not sure what the plans are to control that runoff, but it sure can be handled in that pond, at least in our estimation. Secondly, you may or may not be aware, there's a light law like back there. You would go down there today and see a lot of birds, but there are some winter birds that stop over, there's some resident ducks down there, so for whatever less worth of the consideration that exists. This project impacts three residential properties. And on your pictures you showed, with all due respect, it showed all wooden body, it's not really showing the proximity of these residences to that particular half-acre lot. This proposal appears to be, at least our view, more concerned with the business impact than it does the residence impact. There is a big tax base in the Village Oaks area and in these vacant residences. These are not fifty-year-old colleges, cottages that are out for rental. They are residences of people that have decided to make this their primary place or at least not rent out and use as a primary residence. In our opinion, approved with negatively impacted quality of life, property values, exacerbated already congested traffic conditions, along with adding more density to an already densely developed area, the burden of these impacts will be felt by all adjacent neighbors, but most directed by the Village Oaks property owners. We are the ones that are really in the middle of this whole, ambitious name, it's an app nation, one of our neighbors. She is really gonna get a bad end to this deal if it's approved. And our view is the village doesn't need this project. Previously, the Marshall Phase Two project was rejected and like fine wine, unfortunately has not improved with age. We respectfully ask that you not approve this project and look at this as you may be saying in future presidents as to how to handle density in upcoming decisions. Thank you for the time and thank you for listening. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ivan Figaro, and I live on the upper end here. If I'm not mistaken, this is a planning commission, and you're here to determine what is the appropriate land use for this property. We all recognize that there's problems with garbage and, you know, we'd all like to see more sidewalks, we'd like to see the water drainage solved, we'd love to see parking taken care of. But this body here is to decide what is the appropriate use for the land that's in front of you. It's not here to solve noise problems, it's not here to solve garbage collection problems, it's land use. Therefore, please deny this zoning request as it states there because it fails to comply with the Glen County existing zoning ordinance for this area. Thank you.
On behalf of Village Oak homeowners, we would have no problem with four houses that compared to this alternative.
Four plus over.
I'm a young woman, I've been there almost twenty years, living on the west end of the circle. But the impact of this high density will affect us over there too. When I gave my car, I still work, maybe go somewhere. I have four winters, I go on bicycles, I've got some of the travel that much I've ever seen in my life. Expect to look after them. Your first concern is their welfare. And I just can't imagine how that will improve anything about that until it allows us to happen. Sure, the county can solve the garbage problem without sending out to the developers. I'd ask you to please deny this and keep the same, same, same agreement. Thank you for your time.
This not a good last speaker?
Not as much a comment as a question, but much of the supporters have said that this is related to efforts not to profit from the construction project, but to better the outside community with parking and traffic road issues, drainage, et cetera, which is not the purview of the planning commission. And I just wanna ask the question, if the commission or if this body or the commission intends to enter a binding agreement with this developer, since this improvements to garbage and other things are unrelated to the proposal at hand, and I just think there's a question and as one comment, I would hate for a decision to be made on something that has nothing to do with the property before.
Would the applicant like to rebuttal?
Yeah, in regard to the density, this additional half-acre adds twelve single rooms. Four houses likely would have about sixteen rooms. So for the statement that this is gonna be a drastic increase in density, that's just not true. It's likely to be an actual reduction in the number of rooms. Four houses, likely three or four bedrooms per, that would be sixteen rooms, that's four, four unit, four rooms per house. This adds twelve. The remainder of the project behind Phase One is already zoned V and U, and there would be an alternate plan for some sort of a condo unit on the rest of that tract. So what we're looking at today really adds twelve units. I'll make sure that that is pointed out. The other thing about the parking, that was a good question you asked earlier, about the hundred spaces that are public parking for the village, those are a hundred that are available for anybody to use, but there are also forty-five spaces that are behind gates. So those forty-five spaces would be accessible by the, by the unit owners. By the, by the parking requirements, by the ratio, it's one point one five parking spaces per unit. Well, those behind the gate actually are one point oh seven spaces per unit. So we're right at the requirement behind the gate, then the extra one hundred-plus spaces for the public use combined with residential use. That, that, I want to clarify that on the availability of public versus private parking. As far as the noise, certainly noise can come into play. With the residential use, certainly, that's a very popular area, it would be very likely that someone would like rental houses in that area, it could even be party houses. There'll be no buffer on the back of this property with residential use. With this use, there will be a buffer that has a thick tree planting plan and an opaque, an opaque fence. So that, that could help mitigate some of the noise. But I just wanted to make those clarifications. See you next week.
Thank you.
That's not true about buffers. There is an on there, there has to be a buffer there.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Paul Andrews, county engineer, made a buffer determination on that pond to determine there was not a buffer as far as county engineer Paul Andrews is concerned.
Any, any further discussion? Want to ask him a question? Excuse me, Mr. Roberts, would you mind coming forward?
It, the lowest two wants exactly a half acre or is more than?
It's one lot.
Uh, let's see. And my reason for my question is it's exactly a half acre, you can't put four houses on it.
It's point five acres.
Well, takes twenty-four thousand square foot for four houses and yet you want a half acre.
I have to, to refer to certain.
So I think it's three houses in lieu of four.
And, and I just wanna clarify, if I could just clarify something with you, now you seem to have backpedaled just a little bit for me. Your project, even though you're gonna have some behind the gate, the parking, you still need some of those parking spots in the right-of-way to satisfy your parking requirement. Okay, just, that didn't change?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
I'd like to just make a comment. You know, the, the traffic in St. Simons is pretty unique, and I was a transportation engineer in Atlanta for over forty years and saw what can happen when you overdevelop. One of the things that I think is unique about St. Simons is that so many people are not in their house every day. My wife and I have lived down here for ten years, and we'd come down once, once a month or once every other month. So we went from having one car on the road two days a month to having two cars on the road every day. And if we continue to do that, I think that's gonna be a big problem. If you're gonna have a hotel and you're gonna try to keep those beds full, that's gonna be a lot more than if they, than the same equivalent number of bedrooms in single-family homes, because some of those people aren't gonna be here all the time. And I think that's the kind of nuance that we need to be careful about as we contemplate different development potentials down here, is how the traffic is gonna operate. I still don't understand how you're gonna manage the, the parking. I mean, if I were a restaurant owner in the village, I would tell every employee to go down there and park at four o'clock in the afternoon, and they leave at midnight. I don't know how you can stop it. If you're not gonna have any controls over the parking, then it's, I just don't see how it's gonna work. So anyway, I think, I think it's, I think there's some issues we gotta deal with.
Any questions?
Any more questions?
Thank you.
I do have some comments, though.
Any comments?
Do you wanna go ahead and comment?
Any comments?
I'll be glad.
Oh, Stan, I think wants to comment, too.
Make sure I, this is correct. Today, there is no hotel being built. That site plan hasn't been approved, has it? What's being built today is a six multi-family dwelling unit with seventy-five hundred square feet of office space.
Right.
Correct.
So today, there is no hotel there. Remember that. Today, it's six multi-family dwelling units, seventy-five hundred square feet of office space.
Different property.
Well, that's the Phase One.
It's a Marshall building. Now, that's what's being built on the current site. This piece of property, we're now looking at rezoning, joining that, which we approved for that rezoning six, eight months, a period ago. At the time that I voted for that rezoning, which was unanimous, it wasn't for a hotel to be built. It was a tie-in of what was there or some residential. County commission then turned that down. So try to get all these things together. I have a real problem with giving away right-of-way for parking. That's a bad precedence for me to see a cent. As citizens, we can park in a right-of-way anytime we want to. I can drive and park in front of your house and stay there twenty-four hours, and I have that right. You don't own the right-of-way, the county does, and I can park it. So the right-of-way along Lord Avenue can be parked in today, and is. So I got a little problem with, I have a real problem with giving away right-of-way for parking. Now, we could approve this to go V zoning if we add some conditions that it cannot have a hotel on it. And they could use it all for parking for what they may wanna do, but we haven't approved a site plan for a other hotel. I'm not, I don't know what the group will do when that comes out. That's another issue. Today, we're talking about just changing this from residential to something that can do a lot more. Three or four houses, and not knowing if it's more than a half acre or not exactly half acre, it could be three houses, if it's a little more, it could be four. The amount of traffic associated with that compared to fourteen bedrooms is a lot less. Now, if you can solve the problem with trash, the people that, the developer today can take his Marshall building and combine that and do that today, and maybe doesn't take a hotel to do that, if that, that's what he would like to do. So I just wanted to bring up that there isn't a hotel today, it isn't approved. What's in place today is six multi-family dwelling units and seventy-five hundred square foot of office space.
Okay, I have, I have a comment also. As Mr. Kurgandol says, I have an issue with allowing someone who wants to rezon their property to use public right-of-way to satisfy their parking requirements. I don't recall that ever having been done before, and I'm not inclined to use public property in that manner. I also agree that if the dumpster issue can be solved, that, I don't see why that has absolutely anything to do with rezoning a piece of property from residential to commercial. It might be a carrot and stick issue, but I'm not biting. So the same thing for the dumpsters, I can just fix that if there's ability to put sidewalks in there. I'm sure the county would figure out a way, the county engineer can figure out a way to put sidewalks in there. If you've ever driven down Lord Avenue behind the Mellow Mushroom, it's horrible. And I can't imagine how you would put a parking lot at the end of that street. If you go down there, there is a pond, and if they wanna take almost a half acre and make it an asphalt driveway for parking, that pond is, I don't think, going to be able to handle that. You do have homes back there that right now back up to that half acre. And I'm not inclined to change that to commercial at this time.
Any more comments? Make a motion?
I'll do it.
Go ahead.
I'm on board.
They're also in our book.
Do I have to say it just like that? Yeah, I move recommend to Board of Commissioners denial of rezoning application ZM3220 based on failure to comply with Glen, Glen County zoning ordinance sections, section eleven oh three.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? The vote has, was taken and is unanimous to deny it.
The Queen's Court.
Going to the Queen's Court now?
The Queen's Court.
No, we have to go to Pleasant Grove subdivision. Um, this is PP3229, Pleasant Grove subdivision, considered preliminary plat approval for a nine-lot subdivision. The parcel of zone R6, one-family residential, the proposed development is located on the southeast side of South Harrington Road's intersection with Mamaloo Lane, parcel ID zero four dash zero five four two four and zero four dash zero nine four seven four. Paul Carter with Altamah Preserve LLC, applicant and owner. Steph?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's Casey Davy Hart. This is an application I intend to present to you this evening for Pleasant Grove subdivision. As you can see up on the screen, the two highlighted parcels would be the area on which Pleasant Grove subdivision is developed. It is on South Harrington, adjacent to Mamaloo Lane, and on the other side, there is an access easement that has not been opened or used like Mamaloo Lane has. I do have a, an error in my report, it is not a nine-lot subdivision, it is a thirteen-lot subdivision. That's my mistake, I read it incorrectly while I was doing this report. As you can see up on the screen, this is the proposed plat for the subdivision. This is a photo taken. The unpaved road you see on the right is Mamaloo Lane, and the paved road is South Harrington. This house is, sits on the property that you saw on the previous screen, that's, I'm not gonna say in the middle of it, but it's on the front of what will be that subdivision. Here is looking back towards Frigga Road. This is the general nature of South Harrington Road, just to give you all an idea. The subdivision would be on the left, and the existing housing is on the right. The advocate would like for you to consider preliminary plat approval for a thirteen-lot subdivision. The property is currently undeveloped and zone R6. I did see that there is a house. I did see that there is a house out there. I apologize for that error also. That house will be taken down before the property is developed. The smallest proposed lot in the subdivision is a little over 6,600 square feet. The proposed subdivision is located in the area on St. Simon's Island that currently lacks the capacity to handle additional residences other than those already platted according to JWSC. In order to address this issue, the applicant has added a statement to the proposed plat that says the approval is conditioned upon and subject to approvals from Joint Water and Sewer. Staff believes the submitted preliminary plat meets all ordinance requirements necessary for approval. I don't understand, I thought I had taken that knock out, I apologize again. The possible motions before you are to move to approve the application, defer the application, or deny the application. And I would like to answer any questions at this time. If I remember correctly, JWSC had a five-year horizon on meeting the capacity needs for this area and upgrading all of their lift stations and computations.
So this may be not be able to develop for five years or something portion of it?
That would ultimately depend upon Joint Water and Sewer's actions in this area.
And is it normal if we approve something that can't be developed for five years?
It has been done several times previously with Taffey Place and I believe goes to one other, as long as they had this statement, the statement regarding that the approval was subject to all the Joint Water and Sewer, all the conditions that Joint Water and Sewer have, that you all have approved of them previously.
Is that statement on the plat?
Yes, ma'am.
Where is that? This is so tiny, it's hard for us to, I mean, it's seriously hard to.
It's the third statement underneath.
Well, it's like this bit.
Inbox underneath the certificate of preliminary plat approval.
Not under the general notes?
No, ma'am, it's separate.
Down here?
Would you like me to read the statement?
No, that's all right. I'll find it. Certificate of preliminary plat approval?
It's right below that one.
Oh, the last one.
I have a question. What happens to Mamaloo Lane?
What happened to it?
What happens to it, yes, with this development?
What happens to it? This, this subdivision will not be accessible through Mamaloo Lane. It's possible that the parcels that have Mamaloo Lane afterward, the property could access their, their property through Mamaloo, but I believe all of them will be encouraged and have the access to their parcel in the front on their proposed street.
So you take, so Mamaloo Lane is being taken away?
No, ma'am.
No?
Mamaloo Lane will remain as is.
So my question is, if it remains as is, why is it that the owners cannot access their property from the rear?
They could. I think they're going to be encouraged though to access it from the road that's being developed, the cul-de-sac that's being developed. Everything will be addressed off of Pleasant Grove Lane and that's where their driveways will be built.
Excuse me, the Altamah Reserve listed as filing that status of being dissolved. Have you all been able to check that?
Mamaloo Lane is a 40-foot easement, that's what it says.
I was unaware of that.
Is Mamaloo Lane a 40-foot easement? Is that?
That's what it shows.
That's what it says.
That's kind of unique road within two subdivisions, right? In the property of two subdivisions.
Okay.
What we were using is also driving on the subdivision that's not developed yet.
Okay.
I have a question I should have asked earlier, but on all those street signs, the dirt roads along that stretch, there's the street name and PE on the signs. Does that mean private easement?
Yep.
So does that mean that these people would have to get permission from the people who own it to access it?
Depending which, depending which rights are transferred.
Well, that's why they're going to go down the road of creating.
They don't have, they don't necessarily have a right to access it.
No, they don't.
Okay.
No more questions of staff? Applicant?
No, it's, it's, oh, well, okay. Applicants are there, yes.
My name is Kip DeBryn, I'm with EMC Engineering Agent for the applicant. Here to request that you consider this for approval and if there's any questions you may have.
I guess I would ask, have you been in contact with the Joint Water and Sewer Commission?
Yes, ma'am.
And what are your prospects?
Well, I know that they currently are making some renovations to partner sewer system and they have, they are seeking proposals for the design and engineering for that whole 2032 lift station basin. So they're actively in the progress of trying to get that whole system approved.
So it wouldn't be five years till you start construction, would it?
Hopefully not. I mean, the developer certainly understands that. There is some capacity, I think, in their system, even though it's not the standard publication they have, and this is such a small subdivision, they're going to have to apply it back into that system after.
Sir, are you aware that the official listing for the applicant, the Altamah Reserve LLC is listed as dissolved?
No, sir, I will have to, as you said, with the applicant, I know.
And, and who is the principal with Altamah Preserve?
Paul Carter, he's a resident.
Is he the sole principal?
Yes, sir, as far as I know, he is.
Do we have any other questions over there? Any other questions of the applicant? Any discussion?
May I ask a quick question? How tall is that, or what does that say, 13 lots, but our paper says 9?
It's regular, so.
How much is it?
It's 13.
Is it 13 or not?
Ma'am, it's 13.
13, okay, thanks.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Ask if, ask the commissioners if you want to make a motion.
Do you want anybody opposed?
No, it's not.
I'd like to at least make a statement that.
Okay. Give them a mic.
Okay.
Just make a statement, sir.
Along the lines that our nearest member, that the traffic, it's not so much the traffic of any particular project, it's a few little bit of all traffic. And we know we have a traffic problem. We aren't doing very much trying to fix it, there's some studies. We know we've got a water and sewer problem, it's not been solved. I don't understand why we approve something that may be five years old, if we even know what would happen on the sign. And we seem to need it, that we ought to cure these infrastructure problems before we blanket approve other projects. You know, and we've got a question about whether it's a legal corporation or LLC or not, and that I, I just don't understand why we, you would blanket approval for something that's so, and that.
Concerning the, we have three subdivisions, I think, right now, I think it's three that's been approved along these same lines, where they could start building anytime, they just can't tie in. Kind of.
Yeah.
Correct?
No, sir, the, and I wanted to bring this up, if you are, if you are inclined to approve this, subject to the approval of or the expansion of capacity of JWSC, the applicant needs to know that what that means for them is they cannot get any of the construction plans approved under this plat unless and until the JWSC gives okay on that. And further, if it is five years, this plat will expire and you'll have to come back and get a new plat approved. So I, I'm not suggesting that you all go one way or another, but if you're inclined to approve it, subject to those JWSC approvals, I think, I would like an explicit acknowledgement on behalf of the applicant, that they understand that means no construction plans will be approved and that there's a possibility that if five years elapses, this plat expires and you'll have to come back and do a whole new plat.
Where's the applicant?
And to answer your question, however, to reach your point, Mr. Kirkendall, the ones you've already approved are the same, but.
Is that clear?
To this, answer his question, we are aware of that on behalf of the committee. The owner developer is aware of that.
He's aware of everything that was just said? He's aware that if we do approve it, it could expire before he's able to build or, I mean, to go further with the permits and everything of that nature? So he's fully aware of this?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that time period, is that time period two years after we approved?
It's five years and then.
Five years after we approved?
Yes, sir, and then under certain conditions, I can spend additional two.
Oh, okay. Is there a motion?
I move to deny application PP 3229 Pleasant Grove subdivision.
Is there a second?
He's moved denied, PP 3229.
Is there a second?
I'm moved to approve application PP 3229. Is that denied for like a second?
Subject to.
Well, it's all, it's all subject already in there, it's.
No.
Subject to, subject to the plat and the.
No, subject to the JWSC approval for connections.
That's on the, that's on the.
But, but it needs to be in the motion.
Subject to approval by the.
JWSC connections.
Joint Water and Sewer Commission. Just a reminder, things that we've said before, to turn down a site plan that meets all criteria, we must state all the reasons for it. And I don't know how we state a reason for this with all those things that are said. That's my problem with this. I don't like approving many of these, but we have to state a reason and I say it can stand up in court. That's my words, not the attorney's word.
The reason is that it does, they can't tie into the Joint Water and Sewer system.
But that's in the motion that they can't do that, so how can we not approve with all that said? And that's my, that's just me.
I'm throwing this to you now, Mr. Worthing, can you clarify this, please?
You can deny a preliminary plat for not meeting the requirements in the subdivision regulations. And one of the subdivision regulations is, is either they have to connect to PoliCar and Sewer or they have to get a variance approved by the Board of Commissioners from that, that requirement. So it's up to you to decide whether you feel like they can meet the requirement for PoliCar and Sewer. If you feel that they don't, then you can deny the preliminary plat application based on the fact that they can't access water and sewer. Or if you feel like making it subject to approval of the Joint Water and Sewer Commission fulfills that requirement and you can approve it based on that.
Thank you for clarity.
I'm going to second the motion and I'm going to, I'm going to second the motion that Mr. Kirkendall made where he approves the, moved to approve the subdivision, subject to the ability to get their tap-ins from the Joint Water and Sewer Commission, availability of water and sewer, and I'm going to second that. And I'm going to say that with that, making it subject to that, I don't see why we would make the applicant come back again once they get water and sewer, just to turn around and at that time say, okay, you can do it now. So they're, they're before us now and so I think we would have approved it either way. The issues that, that I, I understand many of you are very concerned about, as we are, is the infrastructure on this island, but that, but that, that as a broad issue cannot make us deny someone the use of their property. That it just cannot, in my opinion. No, sir, we're not having publics right now, thank you. I know you probably disagree with me wholeheartedly, but that's what my, that's my opinion of it and that's why I second it.
You need to be amiable through your building authority.
So let me, let me just say, let me just say that the preamble is, is a broad statement and we have specific criteria. And in the law, when you have something that's broad and then you have something that's more specific, the criteria that's more specific is more controlling than something that's broad. And that's the way of legal construction. That's what the law does. So that's my.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor? I'm sorry, let me see.
Oppose.
So what is it? Four?
Four to.
Four, four, four to.
Four to.
Four in favor, two opposed.
You better ask for that.
Anyway, those opposed?
I oppose.
Oppose, two.
Just, just to get it passed.
VP 3240, Queen's Court, consider a request to approve the alteration of the existing exterior color scheme for Queen's Court Motel. The site located at 437 Kingsway is approximately 100 feet north from the intersection of Ocean Boulevard and Mallory Street. Parcel ID 04-04446, Larry Bryson, agent for Queen's N LLC, applicant and owner.
I'm Julie Grum, planner with Glen County.
Could you speak up, please?
Sorry, I'm trying to get it right. Julie Grum, I'm a planner with Glen County.
I hear you. Pick up.
Good evening, I'm Julie Grum, planner with Glen County. I have VP 3240 or 37 Queen's, I'm sorry, Kingsway. This is also known as Queen's Court Motel. The applicant is requesting to alter the existing paint color of the motel. This is a slide of the subject property. You'll see the Queen's Court sign that's been there as long as I could find back in the research. This hotel was built in 1948. Next one, please. This is a view looking across Ocean, you'll see Mallory Mushroom and Village Meadows. This is the proposed site in the existing color scheme. These are the proposed color washes. The twodey, which is a red color, goes on the doors. The silver shadow is proposed for the walls of the building. The dorado blue was for the eaves and the ultraviolet light is for the stairs and the ramps. This is a slash on both of the site and colors. All the green sections used in the trim around the windows would be blue. The white would be silver and the doors would be twodey red. VP 3240, consider approval of altering existing color scheme of the exterior paint. Under proposed options, I move to approve the application VP 3240 to allow alteration of the existing color scheme to 437 Kingsway. I move to deny or I want to defer. Can you have any questions for me? Do you have any questions for me?
No. It's the applicant here.
The applicant? Mr. Bryson?
Good evening, Larry Bryson, architect and agent for the applicant, who is with me. This is Ian Benferr. And we're here basically to, to request to alter the colors on the exterior of the building, and we'd be happy to answer the questions that you have.
Did you, did you consider another color for that door? That door?
We actually, we actually consulted a designer for that hosting, and once colors are put together, it, it all looks pretty good.
The silver shadow, is that, it's more gray, so the building's going to be gray?
It's actually more of a white, but not, you know, super white, but it still looks white.
So the gray looks white?
Yes.
Looks gray here, yeah.
Yeah, on the, on the screen, it looks gray, but on the building, it's actually.
Silver shadow, pure white. Yeah, I just, I just think the doors, I know a condo units that painted their doors reddish color, and the sun faded that out so badly, but it just looked awful after a while. So I hope if you, you find that that color doesn't work for you, you change it. Anyway.
Any questions of applicant? Thank you. Make a motion.
Okay, um, okay, I move to approve application VP 3240 to allow alteration of the existing color screen scheme to 437 Kingsway.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Yeah, that's it. Thank you all for coming. We're adjourned. No, I'm sorry, hold on. I'm sorry, no, no. Hold on.
Other business?
Too quick, sorry.
It's okay.
Other business?
Yes, ma'am, Chair, I'd like to remind you that we have a meeting on next Monday night in this room discussing the 507 deal with substantial lots of record.
For what?
Substantial lots of record. That would be all that we have.
And you read upcoming meetings? Anything else? All right, anything else?
Nope.
All right, thanks, now we're adjourned.